Good evening. Welcome to the City of Sugar Land City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September the 19th. A little bit about our agenda tonight. In a minute, I'm going to invite Jennifer down. Jennifer's going to walk us through the invocation, and then we've got some special guests that are going to do our pledge to the nation's flag and our pledge to the Texas flag. And then we're going to have a couple of recognitions. And we've got a lot of our recognitions here on the second recognition are right in here. So Jennifer, come on down. Our at-large two-member Jennifer Lane.
Could you please stand and pray with me? Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather together today in this great nation in freedom to discuss the business of local government and to pray openly over our great city. We lift up all of our local leaders. We ask that you provide them with wisdom and the right judgment to make the best decision to move us forward in a way that's pleasing to you. We ask that you watch over our city employees and cast a shield of protection over our frontline workers. And we ask that you hold our residents near and dear to your heart and protect them with your love. God, we ask that you guide us to do your will in all things that bring us closer as a community and as a family in Sugar Land. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we've got a group of kiddos here that's going to help us lead the pledge. We have Barrington Place and Meadows Place National Elementary Honor Society. The National Elementary Honor Society, NEHS, provides students in grades four to six a place to develop and apply their passion for service while obtaining the skills to be confident young leaders for years to come. NEHS membership is centered on recognizing students for their accomplishments while challenging and equipping them to develop further as leaders through service to their school and community. The NEHS program empowers and equips students with the knowledge and skills to be transformative leaders in school, community, and beyond. In order to be eligible for NEHS, students must demonstrate sound and effective leadership, admirable citizenship, and trustworthy character at their respective school and in the community. So come on down. From Barrington Place, we have Abdul Rafiu? That's you. Okay, I'm going to call your names real quick. We're going to be like we're in school. Okay, we got Abigail, Eli, Eva, Jason, Victoria, and Christian, all here from Barrington Place. We have Abigail, Alexander, Ava, Caleb, DeKlan, Emma Fernandez, and Emma McCordick, Gregory, Jacob, Junior Carmen, Logan Scarlett, and we got Charlotte, Benjamin, Yanni, all from Meadows Place. And then Ms. Shailen Clay with Barrington Place and Meadows Elementary, you're the counselor. Thank you, counselor. We have Stacy Garcia, our educator, and Valeska Sanchez, another educator. So, okay, so on the U.S. pledge, we have Jacob. Where's Jacob? Okay, so we're going to all turn and we're going to face the flag here like we do in school. Jacob, you're going to lead us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now for the Texas pledge, we're going to have Eva is going to lead us in that. Eva? Eva, pardon me.
Honored this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're going to have to take a picture. We're going to take a picture.
Counselors, if you could come down. If you could. Can we get you guys? I'm going to count you guys down. Everyone else can just... All right, three, two, one. All right. And everyone else? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Before we go to our next item, I'm going to introduce a couple people. My wife, the First Lady of Sugar Land's here. Sweetheart, stand up. Nancy. And the first husband of District One is here, Brad Watley. Our next recognition is the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award, and I'm going to ask Justin Mayor Otto to come down. Justin, I'm going to let you introduce it for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say a couple of words about it and a thanks to the team that's been backing us up and getting this award. It's my honor to continue the legacy of this organization's dedication to financial transparency and excellence. I believe this is our 27th consecutive year, so that's almost as long as I've been alive. So certainly, certainly an honor. I'd like to call my team up here and recognize them, and then we'll grab a pick. So first off, my manager Tyson Lopez, if you'll come up. And Hannah Schulman, our senior analyst, and Crosby Q., our budget analyst, if y'all guys will come up.
Yeah. All right. I guess this one. Okay.
We have our State Rep Suliman Lalani is here. Tonight, we're going to honor somebody that has been the president of the Aga Khan Council almost as long as I've been mayor. So when I came in as mayor seven and a half years ago, Muret Ajani had just been, I think, elected president. And so he's been the president of the Ismaili Council as long as I've been mayor. Little bit about that. During Harvey, during COVID, we never ever had to ask for volunteers. Their community always stood up, always volunteered. I didn't call them, they called me. And they were always available. Their community was always available to step up and help. They not only helped in Sugar Land and in Fort Bend County. I know after talking to Dr. Young, you guys were also down in Houston and some other places. And not just providing food and water, they were mucking out houses. So they were in boots, in clothes, getting dirty, making sure that they got things done. So it's my pleasure now to ask to come up the former president, I don't think you're president now, former president of the Aga Khan Council for the Southwestern United States, Muret Ajani, Salina Sharif, the Vice President of the Aga Khan Council, Faisal Momen, the President of the Aga Khan Council, and Irfan Ali, the honorary secretary of the Aga Khan Council. I'd ask all four of you to please come down front. So Muret, I'm going to turn the mic over to you, and I think you might have a few words, and then I'm going to read a certificate of recognition.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, city leadership, and the fellow residents of the City of Sugar Land. First of all, I'm deeply honored on behalf of all the volunteers to be recognized for the service to the remarkable city that embraced diversity, inclusivity, and spirit of community. Let me express my sincere appreciation to Mayor yourself, city leadership. Your dedication fostering an environment of unity and acceptance has allowed us to thrive and make meaningful contribution. Your commitment to inclusivity resonates with the values we hold dear within our own community. The Ismaili Muslim community is guided by the principles of service, pluralism, and social responsibility. These values are the bedrock of our existence. They inspire us to serve others, to celebrate diversity, and to uphold our responsibility to the society. I am joined by many of my colleagues, volunteers, who have worked tirelessly to benefit community at large. In fact, in fact, the award that I'm receiving, it's really on behalf of all the volunteers who truly deserve the recognition. Our strength lies in our volunteer, the heart and soul of our community. These hundreds of individuals selflessly dedicate their time and energy to make the city a better place. What's organizing a community cleanup drive, offering educational and cultural program, or supporting charitable efforts, their impact is immeasurable. I'll never forget how all of our City of Sugar Land came together in response of Hurricane Harvey. That was a powerful reminder of what a united community should look like. But our service extends beyond our community. We are proud to collaborate with various organizations, schools, food pantries, and local businesses. These partnerships have strengthened our bonds with fellow residents and have enriched our collective experience. As we look to the future, our commitment to service remains unwavering. We are eager to collaborate with the city and stakeholders to make Sugar Land even a better place for everyone. We believe in future where diversity is celebrated, where inclusivity is norm, and where unity thrives. Let me also recognize few individuals who are standing with me. First is Salina Sharif, who is the Vice President of the Khan Council. Faisal Momen, who has now taken over the President of the Council for the Southeast United States. Irfan Ali, he is no longer an honorary secretary, he has now been given the senior pastoral care for the Sugar Land Jamaat Kana. And so thank you to all of you. Let me recognize a couple of other individuals, City Council member Noshad Karmali and Dr. Suliman Lalani. They have been incredible partner, incredible partner in the journey and the support that we all of us provide and serve the community. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In closing, let me express our deep gratitude to the Mayor, City Council member, and to all of you for your support and cooperation. Together, we can ensure that Sugar Land continues to shine as a beacon of diversity, inclusivity, and community spirit. Thank you so much.
Muret, before I read this, I'm going to ask your wife to come down. And I know for those that don't know, so this is, much like the mayor, this is a part-time gig. He has a business that he has to run. In addition to that, he's got a young family and a wife. And he got his MBA from Columbia University while traveling to New York. So he's probably an overachiever. With all respects, I think his wife's going to be glad to have him back home for a while. And I can certainly understand that. Let's... This is a certificate of recognition presented to you, Muret Ajani. Muret Ajani served as the President to His Highness the Aga Khan Council for the Southwestern United States for eight years, which is the maximum tenure allowed for the role. The Ismaili community has provided the Sugar Land area with many contributions over the years, including helping those in need and bringing rich diversity and culture to the area. Muret Ajani had an immense passion for serving his community and engaging others in service. His dedication will be remembered by all of us in our community. Muret Ajani's time was dedicated to the Sugar Land community during his tenure as president, including collaborating with the City of Sugar Land for multiple cultural events, engaging with police and fire departments, holding public forums for citizen outreach, multiple food drives, and doing book launches. And I know it's not just you, it's the entire Ismaili community and the Ismaili Council. So let me congratulate you all, and let me ask everybody from the Ismaili community to come down. We're big on pictures. I think you guys are even bigger on pictures than we are. And that's saying something. Yes, sir. Come on down, everybody. All right, guys. One, two, three, one more. Three. Three. One. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you. Public comment. And this is for any of the agenda items that are not currently considered for a public hearing, and there are none. And I've got a list of several people here. We'll waive the number of people, we'll stay with the three-minute requirement. When I call your name, if you'll come down, introduce yourself, name, and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak on whatever agenda item you wish to. Our first guest tonight is Susan Ridley. Susan, you've been here a number of times, so you know the drill.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Susan Ridley. I live in Woodstream. So I'm talking about budget, Agenda Item 5A, which includes the shelter. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that. I am concerned about all this regionalization talk. The residents of Sugar Land, not Fort Bend County, not Rosenberg, or Richmond, or Matheri City, we voted for the 2019 bond. The voters assumed the bond funds would be spent on a shelter in Sugar Land, not somewhere else. It has been almost four years since the bond was approved. Four years. This is the only bond that has not made any progress that was approved in 2019. I'm a little disappointed. All these studies that have been talked about should have been done prior to the bond, so the voters would know what they were voting for. Not now. If this council and/or the AAB decides to vote for regionalization, this bond should be voted on again by the residents of Sugar Land. This city council represents the City of Sugar Land, not Fort Bend County. I hope you all do not get a false sense of belief that just because there are not a lot of folks speaking up against regionalization, that the folks are for it. I haven't heard of anybody speaking for regionalization. The most important population we should be concerned about is the animals themselves. They cannot come in and speak for themselves. They are the ones that are being harmed by this delay. Also, I am concerned about the $2.4 million in the budget that the city anticipates to be received in donations on behalf of the shelter. If this shelter did not stay in Sugar Land, where do you think the funds are going to come from? We do appreciate all the shelter employees have done for the animals. I know it's been a challenging time for them, and the sooner they get more livable space for them and their animals, the better off they will be. And last but not least, the city employees should be listening to the residents. After all, we pay their salaries, not Fort Bend or any of the other cities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our second guest is Charlene Avery-Turick. Welcome, Charlene.
Hi, I'm Charlene Avery-Turick. I live in Meadowcrest, New Territory. I'm speaking today regarding CMU 1908 and Budget 5A. I'm deeply concerned that the expanded shelter go-bond has once again been pushed back to possibly 2025 or beyond. Our shelter has been closed for intake for most of 2023. The city has been working on getting a portable building set up for staff offices and intake, which would free up some space for staff, but will not open up any more kennel space, which is desperately needed. The need for a shelter expansion has never been more critical. That leaves the public extremely perplexed as to why city leaders are continuing to stall on building the new expanded shelter the citizens overwhelmingly approve of. I can understand why city council would ask for city leaders to research regionalizing our shelter, but what we don't understand is why it is taking so long to inform the public of research, which has been at the expense of our shelter staff and animals. The needs assessment study was completed by Fort Bend County within a few months. The City of Sugar Land has been waiting one year for conclusion on their research. The two things listed as top priorities for any shelter to succeed are great visibility and accessibility. If you build a regional shelter outside of the city, you would lose this. You would also lose control over the way the shelter is run and the SOPs used. Rosenberg has gone back to kill us after being NK for years. Have you looked at what it will take to actually run a humane shelter that does not kill for space if you decide to build a regional shelter even within the City of Sugar Land? I firmly believe that it will not be in the best interest for the city or the shelter animals to build a regional shelter, especially without voter approval. The loss of public representation on this issue is equally disturbing to me and should concern every citizen of Sugar Land. Why would the city leaders even think that it would be a great idea to build a regional shelter that will cost more to build, more to maintain, more per intake, lose visibility, lose accessibility, lose volunteers, lose adoption opportunities, control over the SOPs, not to mention the potential loss of jobs? I believe that the city leaders should speak about these concerns and tell the public the pros of a regional shelter so that make us understand this. We have researched as well and have been unable to come up with one positive outcome of building any type of regional shelter. Matter of fact, the most successful regional shelter director told us she wished that they did not exist, that shelters are needed at local levels to keep community support. You move the shelter out of the community, you will lose the community support you need to make it a success. Again, my question to city leaders, what are your conclusions to your year-long research? Why are you stalling? And when did your research become a directive of making it happen because none of this has been approved by the citizens of Sugar Land? When will the new expanded shelter that the citizens voted on be built to help with our overcapacity problems? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next guest is Lynn Harpan.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Harpan, 4003 Brenner Court, Sugar Land. We've spent a year discussing the future of Sugar Land Animal Services, and in that year, very little has been done for the shelter. Although staff has been hired, there's no reflection in the budget or the CIP of the great need for space and no money for enhancements to programs. This reluctance to invest in our shelter reflects the desire by the mayor and others to move our shelter out of town. Despite the 2019 go-bond vote approving $6.6 million to build a new shelter, it remains the only project not even started, let alone completed. You are summarily ignoring the wishes of Sugar Land residents when you pass another budget and CIP without concern for the shelter's staff, volunteers, or animals. Your refusal to note this as a crisis is puzzling at best. I implore you to ask yourselves what is right? What is right for the residents of Sugar Land? What is right for the stray animals who find themselves on the worst day of their lives at the mercy of people who have been assigned to care for them? You will decide who those people are. What is right for a Sugar Land resident who discovers a beloved pet has gone missing? Today, they can call and the phone will be answered. They can drive a few miles down the road and walk through the 30 or 40 shelter kennels themselves, and they can trust that their pet is being cared for in a compassionate way. A regional facility in Rosenberg means that same citizen will drive 20 miles down the road and frantically search among 400 or more kennels. What's right for the volunteers? People like Ellen Tarver, who has walked dogs for three afternoons a week for 10 years. I spoke to Mr. Ferguson once about my concern that volunteers will not go to a giant shelter in Rosenberg. He countered fairly that when people like to do something, they will often travel to do it. But there are shelters and rescues all over Sugar Land that need volunteers, so volunteers will have that choice. And there's a very sad truth. Volunteers will often not work in places that break their hearts, no matter how great the need. The same sensitivity that compels us to give our time, energy, and money for animals keeps us from spending our days in places where animals' needs are not met. I've volunteered for a long time at Sugar Land. I've never volunteered and won't volunteer at Bark. The Sugar Land residents who have spent more than a year speaking up about this issue care about our community, and as a group, we make very few demands in this city. This is our one demand: provide a security net here in our city for the thing we love most after the people in our lives, our beloved animal companions. The city council members I have spoken to are animal lovers. They share their lives with cats and dogs and love them just the same way I love mine. But it is not enough for you to provide loving, attentive care for your own pet. As a Sugar Land city government official, you took an oath to help us protect our homes and our families. It's time to commit to protecting the one other thing that residents most treasure, our animal friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Pansy Chung.
Hi, Pansy Chung, 2731 Country Club. So, good evening. I want to ask the city to please revisit the expansion of our local animal shelter during our budget considerations. I understand that there is recent rise in overcrowdedness in shelter across the board due to cost of living and other environmental factors, but let us not forget that Sugar Land Animal Shelter's overcapacity problem did not stem from those issues alone. We have been in desperate need for shelter expansion since 2008 due to several annexations. Our growth in population has been exponential since then, and that means the animals we serve have increased exponentially per capita. And so really, our capacity issue has been going on for years, and even before COVID and inflation. In 2019, we voted for a $6 million bond specifically for shelter expansion jobs? I believe that the city leaders should speak about these concerns and tell the public the pros of a regional shelter so that make us understand this. We have researched as well and have been unable to come up with one positive outcome of building any type of regional shelter. Matter of fact, the most successful regional shelter director told us she wished that they did not exist, that shelters are needed at local levels to keep community support. You move the shelter out of the community, you will lose the community support you need to make it a success. Again, my question to city leaders, what are your conclusions to your year-long research? Why are you stalling? And when did your research become a directive of making it happen? Because none of this has been approved by the citizens of Sugar Land. When will the new expanded shelter that the citizens voted on be built to help with our overcapacity problems? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next guest is Lynn Harpom.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Harpom, 4003 Brenner Court, Sugar Land. We've spent a year discussing the future of Sugar Land Animal Services, and in that year, very little has been done for the shelter. Although staff has been hired, there's no reflection in the budget or the CIP of the great need for space and no money for enhancements to programs. This reluctance to invest in our shelter reflects the desire by the mayor and others to move our shelter out of town. Despite the 2019 go-bond vote approving $6.6 million to build a new shelter, it remains the only project not even started, let alone completed. You are summarily ignoring the wishes of Sugar Land residents when you pass another budget and CIP without concern for the shelter's staff, volunteers, or animals. Your refusal to note this as a crisis is puzzling at best. I implore you to ask yourselves what is right? What is right for the residents of Sugar Land? What is right for the stray animals who find themselves on the worst day of their lives at the mercy of people who have been assigned to care for them? You will decide who those people are. What is right for a Sugar Land resident who discovers a beloved pet has gone missing? Today, they can call and the phone will be answered. They can drive a few miles down the road and walk through the 30 or 40 shelter kennels themselves, and they can trust that their pet is being cared for in a compassionate way. A regional facility in Rosenberg means that same citizen will drive 20 miles down the road and frantically search among 400 or more kennels. What's right for the volunteers? People like Ellen Tarver, who has walked dogs for three afternoons a week for 10 years. I spoke to Mr. Ferguson once about my concern that volunteers will not go to a giant shelter in Rosenberg. He countered fairly that when people like to do something, they will often travel to do it. But there are shelters and rescues all over Sugar Land that need volunteers, so volunteers will have that choice. And there's a very sad truth. Volunteers will often not work in places that break their hearts, no matter how great the need. The same sensitivity that compels us to give our time, energy, and money for animals keeps us from spending our days in places where animals' needs are not met. I've volunteered for a long time at Sugar Land. I've never volunteered and won't volunteer at Bark. The Sugar Land residents who have spent more than a year speaking up about this issue care about our community, and as a group, we make very few demands in this city. This is our one demand: provide a security net here in our city for the thing we love most after the people in our lives, our beloved animal companions. The city council members I have spoken to are animal lovers. They share their lives with cats and dogs and love them just the same way I love mine. But it is not enough for you to provide loving, attentive care for your own pet. As a Sugar Land city government official, you took an oath to help us protect our homes and our families. It's time to commit to protecting the one other thing that residents most treasure, our animal friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Pansy Chung.
Hi, Pansy Chung, 2731 Country Club. So, good evening. I want to ask the city to please revisit the expansion of our local animal shelter during our budget considerations. I understand that there is recent rise in overcrowdedness in shelter across the board due to cost of living and other environmental factors, but let us not forget that Sugar Land Animal Shelter's overcapacity problem did not stem from those issues alone. We have been in desperate need for shelter expansion since 2008 due to several annexations. Our growth in population has been exponential since then, and that means the animals we serve have increased exponentially per capita. And so really, our capacity issue has been going on for years, and even before COVID and inflation. In 2019, we voted for a $6 million bond specifically for shelter expansion and hoped to solve that problem. However, to my understanding, the expansion project has not taken place. This delay is costing Sugar Land residents their shelter services. Currently, shelter intakes are closed or not open to all residents due to overcrowding. I can't help but think that was the reason why we voted for the shelter expansion in 2019. I know shelter staff are trying their best, but their hard work alone is not enough to solve a population issues that were brought on by annexations. It seems like our shelter expansion plans have been on the back burner for a little while, and the last year, we started considering regionalization. Sugar Land is one of the most equipped facilities compared to all the nearby shelters. Our staff has mentioned that we don't quite have enough local support, but I think compared to other shelters around us, both private and public, relatively speaking, we do have an amazing group of loyal volunteers and a great staff. I know we're struggling at this point, but I can't imagine how merging with other shelters, who may or may not be struggling more than we have, would be a benefit to our city and the animals. We already know that it is very difficult for animals to survive in a kennelled environment. A mounting increase in animal counts that comes with merging shelters will only create more stress for them. Regionalization will increase the animal-to-staff-and-volunteer ratio exponentially, which can be detrimental to both humans and animals. We may lose volunteers due to trauma that is attached to volunteering at mega-shelters. From my personal experience, a lot of my fellow volunteers stay away from volunteering at mega-shelters for the fear of traumatic events, like they may witness there, such as euthanasia and large numbers. As we know, volunteers are vital for shelter operation and rescue efforts. A shelter's success depends on them. Animals are easiest to handle in a local and less stressful environment with less animal counts. And I want to thank the city and the volunteers for their great job that they've done despite all the struggles we faced in the past year. I understand the idea of regionalization may have come from a good place, but what I really want to ask is can we please revisit the idea of expanding our local shelter? Because the longer we wait, the more it will cost the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on one of the agenda items? Now, we're going to go ahead and move to item number three, the Consent Agenda. It's going to be taken as one item unless a council member wants to pull an item. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Cromali. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Watley. Vote this time, please. Hand vote, please. And it passes seven to zero. Thank you. Item number four, donations. For a consideration of an action on acceptance of a land donation from the George Foundation for 125.753 acres of land for the expansion of Brazos River Park, we have with us tonight Joe Cheshire, our Director of Parks and Rec. And then we have some special guests.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The Parks and Recreation Department's really excited and honored to be bringing this land donation to you for consideration tonight. Before I jump into it, I'd like to introduce members of the George Foundation Board that are here tonight. Mr. Roger Adamson is the CEO of the George Foundation, and Mr. Steve Eubanks is one of the Board of Directors for the foundation. We appreciate having them here tonight. They've worked very closely, their legal team, our park staff. Our legal team, led by Angelina, Anjali Thomas, was very instrumental in putting this whole package together. Just a little bit about the site itself and the river corridor. I think most everybody's familiar with Memorial Park and Brazos River Park. That's just kind of the tip of the iceberg for the Brazos River Corridor. We currently own most of the properties you see here in the green, which are, make up about 1,200 acres. The full river miles through Sugar Land is about nine miles, and there's a floodway area of about 3,600 acres that really can't be developed for houses or commercial uses. So it's perfect for parkland, and so our long-term plan is to, you know, continue to acquire land and develop parks and green space along the river. Through master plans, our long-range Parks, Rec., and Open Space Master Plan, you know, we've identified kind of the value of this land to continue to pursue these acquisitions for pedestrian bicycle connectivity, environmental protection. Being floodway property, it helps minimize the chance of flooding around the area. And then it also continues to become a regional destination for, you know, bike trails, hiking, nature tourism, those sorts of things. So it enhances, you know, the community in multiple ways. So this graphic is really our long-range master plan, and what you're seeing in all the green there is that 3,600 acres I mentioned and the nine miles. So the specific property we're looking at is in an Oxbow Lake area. It's a really beautiful property. It's very easily accessible from adjacent properties that the city already owns. It's got a lot of potential for, you know, continuing the uses that we have: trailheads, connectivity, you know, bird watching, that sort of thing. So this is sort of more of a close-up of the property itself, and the numbers that you can see around it represent the ownerships of that particular area. So you can see that everything labeled as number one on there is property the city already owns. So we pretty much surround the property now. So it's a great, great addition to the park space that already exists there. The site itself is 125.75 acres, and the land value is $310,000. You can see some of the other surrounding uses are some of the lids and HOAs and a couple of private landowners in between. But connectivity is really well, works really well to existing properties there at Sugar Land Memorial Park, near Brenly Trail, and the Palm Springs Dog Park. Here's some kind of visuals of the site itself. You've got some open space. You've got some large trees with canopy that provide some open space underneath the canopy, as well as you've got some fairly dense understory on the property as well. And then you've got wetlands and the Oxbow Lake itself. So you've got a wide variety of landforms and features here, you know, that lend themselves to a wide variety of both active and passive type recreation here along the corridor. So as part of the agreement, we outlined what the intended uses of the property are. So it's primarily for public access, for enjoyment of green space, outdoor recreation and natural areas. One of the stipulations of the agreement is the property shall not be used for any other purpose without consent of the grantor. And so, conditions of the agreement are that the foundation retains mineral rights, carbon capture, groundwater reservations, as well as wetlands reservations. Really, the reservations do not do anything to really prevent the city from developing what type of park facilities that we would intend to construct there and develop there and operate there. Also, conditions of the donation include, there is a revision clause in the agreement, and it's really pretty simple, that the foundation wants to make sure that the land is opened and available for public use within 10 years. So it's a reasonable time period to make it open and available, to be able to get some access opened up into the site. And then, after that 10-year period, if there's any reason that it were to shut down for, say, two years, say we had a flood and we had to rebuild things and things that were there, it was not accessible, if it was closed down for more than two years, we need to go back to the grantor and let them know that that's occurring and to outline what our plans for reopening it are. So those are primarily the conditions of the donation. We'll also be providing an annual report to the foundation on current status of the I would like to note that there really, there's nothing on the property right now. It's basically clear, unimproved site. So there's no, there's no immediate O&M cost related to taking this donation. Now, ultimately, when we do some development in the future, there will probably be some O&M cost associated with it. Right now, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be mowed. There is some, there's a gas pipeline on there that the operator mows a couple of times a year. But from our standpoint, we are not taking on an immediate O&M cost to take on the donation. So with that, our staff recommends acceptance of the George Foundation property donation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Roger, Steve, we really appreciate your partnership in this. We appreciate this donation of property. We think, you know, that corridor has been planned for a long time, you know, and we can make that commitment to program that. So thank you all for your willingness to donate that property. Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, I was going to say, I cannot think of a nonprofit that's had a bigger impact on parks for the city or even, or the county. Cullen and Park would not be in the city without the George Foundation. They made the financial commitment that allowed that deal to happen. That's 750-plus acres that have been improved. You throw this into it as well. It's just there's, I cannot think of a nonprofit that's done more for our residents and Fort Bend County residents, and thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Councilmembers. Carol?
Well, I'm really, really excited about this donation, and I'm extremely grateful to the George Foundation for this and for all that you've done for our city. Yeah, and just a quick question. Is there any evidence of any indigenous remains there? Or, you know, artifacts?
We're not aware of any archaeological studies that have occurred previously. As part of a master planning process, that's something that we will include in our planning in the future as archaeological investigations.
Okay, great. But again, I'm so excited about this addition to our city, and thank you so much.
William.
Well, Mr. Cheshire, I have a feeling that every cyclist, bicyclist is just chomping at the bit right now. So since we have representatives from the Georgia Ranch Foundation, maybe they could stipulate that they all have to wear cowboy hats while they ride their bicycles? And I just think that'd be pretty cool, right? I mean, it's Georgia Ranch, right? But anyhow, I do want to thank you because our outdoor community, they're going to love this. I have a feeling. 125 acres, and what your team's going to be able to do with this is going to be phenomenal. So thank you also.
Stuart.
Motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Got a motion by Jacobson, second by McCutcheon. You'll vote this time, please. Hand vote. And it passes seven to zero. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Steve, Roger. Item number five, Budget 5A. First and final consideration, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land, ordinance number 2319, ordinance of the City Council. City of Sugar Land adopting the annual budget for the City of Sugar Land, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Appropriating the sums as set forth therein, adopting the capital improvement program 2024 through 2028, and adopting a compensation plan. Justin Mayhara, our interim Director of Budget and Strategy. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. So tonight, I'll be asking you to make a motion to adopt the FY24 budget inclusive of the five-year CIP and compensation plans. But first, we'll talk briefly about some of the requirements and process that's got us here so far. As a reminder, the city charter requires that a budget be adopted no later than the 25th day of the last month of the fiscal year. Additionally, the Texas Local Government Code, Section 102009, states that the governing body of the municipality may levy taxes only in accordance with the budget. Therefore, the adoption of the tax rate is on a separate agenda item and after the adoption of the budget. In terms of timelines and development, the budget filing from back in July was followed by a series of budget workshops with council, all of which were open to the public. Additionally, through the months of August and September, public hearings were held on the various components of the budget process, with that final step being the ordinance adopting the budget CIP and compensation, which I'm here before you this evening. So as I mentioned, the previously series of workshops that were held in August where the budget was covered in more detail with the City Council, each workshop was open to the public, where individuals also had the opportunity to make public comments. Continuing on the public education and engagement side, mentioning those public hearings again, those various components that we did cover in August and September included a public hearing on the proposed budget, the fee ordinance, the pit assessment, and the proposed tax So since we filed the budget back in July, we do have a number of changes that have been made. That includes increasing the merit pool for employees from the 3% to 5% as recommended by council. We also are recognizing the additional sales tax performance that we've seen in those revenues within the policy allowance. Additionally, the city did receive the certified tax rule, so the property tax revenues and rebates do reflect those changes. The benefit rates that were previously proposed to increase 5% have been revised down to an increase of 2% on the employee and employer side. Additionally, changes to the five-year CIP program include shifting the purchase of the airport hangar from the '24 CIP to the current fiscal year due to the timing of the closing date on that property. And then, last but not least, we are capturing some additional increases to our property and liability insurance. At this time, staff is recommending that council approve ordinance number 2319, adopting the FY24 budget, five-year capital improvement program, and the FY24 compensation plans. And I'll take any questions at this time.
Questions, Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several here. Regarding sidewalk repairs, residents are being told that it's going to be over a year until the city can repair them, and I've had constituents fall on uneven sidewalks and when one broker risks. And the FY25 sidewalk repair budget will include the annual funding of $625,000 and the remaining ARPA funds of about $800,000. And right now, staff is finishing up or has recently finished the FY22 sidewalk repairs, and staff anticipates that beginning in FY24, they'll have close to about 900 service requests. And they anticipate that between the annual funding and the ARPA funds, that they'll probably expend those by about mid-year '24. And so I guess my question is, if sales tax revenues are coming in higher than expected by mid-year, and if we run out of sidewalk repair funding by that time, would it be possible to consider using some of the one-time funding to complete the FY23 service request? And I guess maybe that's just a, maybe that's a common incentive question, so.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, we will have the spring retreat with council. We talk about how we're looking with the budget. We usually recommend amendments at that time to, and if this is the case at that time, we can do the same if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, follow-up. Thank you.
Follow-up.
Yes, and also, along the same lines, Public Works receives about $825,000 annually to make pavement repairs. And this fiscal year, I believe they ran out of the annual funds for the pavement repair about mid-year, and I'm not including the 2019 geo-bonds for the major repairs, the major roads. And in FY24, staff will again receive annual funds of about $825,000 to continue with pavement repairs. But however, due to the extreme drought, we've got more than the usual number of pavement separations and our potholes forming around the city. And so again, staff anticipates extending these funds by mid-year FY24. And one of my constituents, as an example, has a pavement problem on a road in his neighborhood, and he was told by a supervisor that it's going to take 12 to 18 months to get that properly fixed. So we could have a FY23 service request that could even be repaired maybe in FY25. So again, that'd be something I'd like to look at, maybe the spring retreat if things are coming in higher than usual, or we have some other good surprises and stuff that we might could look at, you know, extending a little bit of extra money to make sure we get our FY23 service requests completed by the end of FY24.
Mike, you want to address that?
Yeah, Mayor, I would, you know, we filed the budget in July, had a series of workshops, went through it, and so, you know, this is, this is the first these issues are being brought up, and we've always been a responsive staff, and so we always do our best to serve the residents, so we'll continue to do that.
Okay. And just one more quick follow-up, Mayor. At a recent meeting, Mayor, you asked that council get an update on the animal shelter? And I know we had several speakers on that tonight. And is that going to be like a written update or a workshop or something? Or what did you envision with that?
I envisioned it being a workshop. And I know the last time that we talked to staff, they were trying to wrap that up. So it'll be, it'll bring it forward in the workshop when staff's finished with it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the budget and the sections of the budget that on animal shelter funding, I would like to mention that I appreciate the testimony that has come regularly from members of the community and let the members of the community know that your comments are not, have not gone unheard. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Cromali. You'll vote this time, please. Hand vote. Nope. Well, we got it. Got it up and running. Oh, it's not all the way. Oh, it's not all the way up, run, hand vote. We got seven oh vote, thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Item number five B, first and final consideration, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land ordinance number twenty-three seventeen, ordinance of the City Council, City of Sugar Land, Texas, levying a property tax rate for the year twenty twenty-three, and directing the tax assessor-collector to assess, account for, and distribute the property taxes as herein levied. And we have with us Ms. Jennifer Brown, our Director of Special Project. Jennifer.
All right, so, this is the final step in the, well, second to last step, I'll take that back, in the budget and tax rate adoption process. So, as you're aware, property tax is one of our main revenue sources. It funds our general operating budget, as well as is pledged for repayment toward our outstanding bonds through our debt service funds. This is one of the few revenue streams that we have control over, and the fact, and the fact that you are able to set the tax rate, and it is the most stable source of revenue. Once those taxes are levied, they are owed by the people who the taxes are levied upon. This funds things like our general operations, public safety, public works, parks, animal shelter, infrastructure maintenance, roads, drainage facilities. It also covers our GO bonds that we'll be selling for the projects that are approved by the voters, and as I said, covers our outstanding debt obligations. Historically, we have, tax rate has been... Okay, sorry, I'm looking at this, and I'm like, that is not the right chart. But tax rate did not go all over the place like that, I do apologize. I don't know why I didn't catch that sooner. Anyway, historically, we have had a very steady tax rate. We got down to thirty cents in the twenty-eleven time period, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, and that point, we really started increasing the homestead exemption. I'm gonna get it off this slide because this is not accurate, and I do apologize for that, not sure what happened. But we have used the homestead exemption to manage the impact on residential bills because that way, we're able to target the relief to residents with leaving the tax rate the same, and we're able to collect the revenue on all the other properties. So, included in the budget is a tax rate of thirty-five cents, and the recommended distribution would be point two zero three nine six two for maintenance and operations, and for debt service will be point one four six oh three eight, and that would be a total point three five zero 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 per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So, to get that, you can see in the chart, we are increasing the total rate by point zero zero three five, we're then shifting point zero zero three nine oh one from the debt component to maintenance and operations. We did publish the required language from the tax code in our notice of the public hearing on the tax rate. It published the proposed tax rate, the no new revenue tax rate, and the voter approval rate. And we also held a public hearing on September twelfth, last week, at five thirty PM, and we had no speakers at the public hearing. The impact on the average residential tax bill is approximately a hundred and eight dollars per year, or nine dollars per month, and this incorporates, this chart incorporates the average home value for both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, which went up nine point nine six percent. It incorporates the point, point zero zero three five increase on the tax rate and the two percent increase on the homestead exemption. And so, that obviously is going to vary depending on individual value changes, but this is the average value for both years. So, tonight, we are here for consideration, a first and final reading of ordinance number two three one seven. You're setting a total tax rate of thirty-five cents with a maintenance and operations component of point two zero three nine six two, and a debt service component of point one four six oh three eight. And then, you'll direct the tax assessor to collect, account, and distribute those taxes. The motion to adopt the tax rate is required under the tax code to be stated in a particular format, and I have that format here on the screen. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. I move the property tax rate be increased with the adoption of a tax rate of thirty-five cents per hundred dollars assessed value, which is effectively a two point seven four increase in the tax rate. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Jennifer.
Yes.
This is for our constituents. Our tax rate is, the new one will be what?
Thirty-five cents.
The increase in tax is?
Point zero zero three five.
Not a thirty-five cent increase?
No.
Just want to make sure, because it's still out there, that we're raising the taxes by thirty-five cents.
Roughly a third of a cent.
And this third of a cent is because of the GO bond from twenty nineteen?
That is correct.
Oh, second to motion there.
And Mayor, just for clarification, when, for those GO bonds, GO bonds that voters voted on and approved, so that is, just want to be clear for people that do not have that understanding.
In fact, all of the increases we have had since twenty nineteen have been due to those GO bonds.
Right. Any other questions? Carol.
So, when the information goes out to the residents, you'll include the fact about the, this is part of the voter-approved GO bonds, in particular for our public safety, so residents will understand that?
It will be in our press release, it will not be on the tax bills.
Right, exactly. In our press releases, it will explain that.
Yes, our press release and our communication about the budget and tax rate adoption, yes, that will be included.
Thank you.
So, before we vote, just a comment. So, we've continued, this council has continued to increase the homestead exemption to make sure that we offset the impact of the tax increase. It effectively shifts it onto our businesses' commercial valuation as opposed to the residences'. And, and I see no reason to, to change that strategy going forward in time, even recognizing that we have additional authorization under the twenty nineteen GO bonds. So, I've got a motion, I've got a second, any other comments? Vote at this time, please.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call vote on the tax rate, please.
Roll call vote, William?
This has to be a record.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aye. Yeah, it passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council members. Item number five C, consideration of an action on the ratification of tax revenue included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Jennifer.
I promise, this is the last one. All right, so, there is a Local Government Code, section one oh two dot oh oh seven that was passed several years ago. Because our property tax levy raises more revenue in property taxes than we raised in the preceding year, then you need to hold a vote separate and apart from the budget and the tax rate approval to ratify the revenue included in, in the budget. And so, that budget will include a cover page with some information. It will show the record vote of how you all voted. It will show the property tax rates for the current and preceding year. It'll show the total amount of our debt obligations, and we will file the budget and that cover page with the county clerk, and that budget will be available on our website until at least the first anniversary of the adoption of the budget, which will be next year on September nineteenth. The budget also has a statement included on the cover page stating that we have, that this budget raises more taxes, more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of two million one hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars, which is a three point two two percent increase from last year's budget, and that property tax revenue be raised, to, to be raised from the new property added to the tax rule this year is five hundred fifty-two thousand nine, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. So, that will all be on the final budget page when we publish. So, our recommendation this evening is for you to vote one more time to ratify the tax revenues as shown in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the top, adopted budget and tax rate for twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion to approve the tax revenues as shown in the twenty twenty-four budget. Got a second by Jacobson. Any questions? Vote at this time, please. Roll call vote? Hand vote? Seven to zero, thank you, council members. Item number six, workshop, six A, review of and discussion on the Great Homes and Sunday Program outcomes and impacts, and proposed changes for the two-year implementation. We've got John Texoriano at the, you must be, you must be hanging around with Ferguson too much. Go ahead, John, talk to us.
Howdy, council. Sugar Land is a trailblazing city, fearlessly forging new paths and surpassing expectations while delivering top-tier services to our residents. And before we get started, going over the impacts of Great Homes, I wanted to recognize a few folks. First off, I wanted to recognize Yola's City Council for approving Great Homes. I want you to know that through your feedback and through approving these programs, you've really touched a lot of lives of our residents, and you should be proud, and, and their neighbors, because they get to go home and be more proud of where they live, and so, thank you for that. I also wanted to recognize the staff who helped administer this program from the city. I got Devin Rodriguez and Jessica Hubbell for thoroughly double-checking my work, Tahamidore Ramadan, Carolyn Egan, Anna Rodriguez, and Yan Lee for reviewing so many applications at the beginning of this, of this program, which is really heavy. I got Sidney Adams, Ashley Hernandez, and Lori Cook for helping so many residents get paid and reimbursed for the work. And then, I also wanted to recognize Impact Strategic Consulting, specifically Lauren Kersey, Melinda Estrada, Brittany Compton, and Curtis Bowens. They provided exceptional customer support to our residents. They worked for us, and they were truly dedicated to our city. And finally, I wanted to recognize the over two hundred residents who were trailblazers and decided to use this pilot program, because they considered, they used a considerable amount of their time and resources to be a trailblazer in our city and reinvest in their homes and support our redevelopment mission. And with that, I'm gonna start off with a video, and we're gonna learn more about Joel's Great Homes story.
I used to live in Pearland, and there were many reasons why we want to move to the Sugar Land location. Among those, the school district, I have a twelve-years-old that we wanted to attend the schools here. I have a special diet, and I usually buy my groceries in Whole Foods because of the variety of vegetables, so I want to be closer to a Whole Food. So, I was every week traveling between Pearland and Sugar Land just to buy my groceries. Also, I am a mountain biker, and I believe the trails here in Brussels Park are one of the best in the Houston area. So, there were many reasons why we want to live in the Sugar Land area. The team, as soon as the first day we saw the house, we fall in love. We knew it was an old house and needs some renovation, but we were willing to make the effort. We were in the process of getting bids for the window replacement, and actually, the vendor was the one that mentioned, hey, by the way, I believe there is a program from the city related to renovation of house, I would take a look. And we went through the process of following the instructions very easy, really. After my neighbors start seeing the transformation of the house, they start asking me questions, because I believe everyone want to do the best with their houses. So, but now I understand, you know, you want to create an environment around you where everybody feel comfortable living, when they see that old houses can be renovated and really look much better, they want to do the same. So, it's like a, it's a community effort that the program is inspiring. If we allow these zones to decay, that is not gonna improve our community. So, keeping our neighbors in good shape is, is very important for, for the, for the community, for the city. So, improving the houses is, is one way to maintain the, the level of the neighbor we want to be. So, I think that's, that's also sending the right message of how our taxes are being very well invested in the citizens. So, that's why I believe it's important.
Here's to Joel. Joel's the quintessential example of what it means to live a life better than you can imagine in Sugar Land. When I met him, I learned his story. He and his family moved here from Pearland very recently because of our amazing parks, mountain bike trails, and grocery stores, but he had an older home. And what started out as just a simple window replacement project ended up turning into a whole home renovation after he learned about the program. And so, you can see his newly painted home here, and I just want to say thank you to Joel for trailblazing with us. So, why did we do this? Why did we implement the Great Homes programs? I mean, with limited developable land left out until complete build-out, we're redefining growth and looking at how to get the most, highest, and best use of the land that we have remaining through redevelopment. And part of redevelopment involves residential reinvestment, which means creating new housing options and renovating our existing housing. So, in February, US City Council approved two resolutions, approving two programs under Great Homes. The update program provided an incentive for residents to make exterior improvements to their home, and the design program provided affordable and accessible home designs to them as well. The applications to the exterior rebate program, the update program, actually closed after only five months, after all of the budgeted program funding, five hundred thousand from the general fund, had been committed as reimbursement incentives to eligible applicants. Reimbursement incentives were offered at ten percent or twenty-five percent of an eligible project's total cost, depending on the age and market value of the property, and the average reimbursement ended up being about three thousand dollars. The following program impacts were achieved. One hundred and sixty-six home improvement projects were approved totaling over two point seven million in total home improvement costs. The average home improvement project costed about sixteen thousand dollars. The most common projects were windows, painting, siding, driveway, landscaping, and fence, and forty percent of projects included more than one project type, so like doing your driveway and windows, for example. Here, you can see a map of the home improvement projects across town. The blue dots are resembled projects that were completed, and the red dots are projects that are still ongoing. We've had some delays in some projects. Forty-four of the one hundred and sixty-six projects are still ongoing. We, we had some record-breaking heat in, in August, and so, that slowed down some work, but that work is still ongoing. You can see the number of project types broken out here. Windows, painting, siding, driveway, and landscaping were the most popular. Now, for some, for the best part of the presentation is the pictures, in my opinion. This is one of my favorite projects that was submitted at, at the very beginning of the application period in February. It's located in Mayfield Park, and you can see the homeowner didn't even have a driveway. And so, I hope you feel the impact here, because I spoke with the homeowner, and they're really grateful for what the city is doing, and there's, they were so proud of their new driveway that they added some new landscaping as well. I really also love this project. It can show how a little bit of paint can go a long way to take a home to the next level. This homeowner added some cool green accents and replaced some pillars in the front of their house. It goes to show that you don't have to paint all of your brick to make your house feel modern and new, but then again, you could totally repaint all of your brick, which goes totally a long way to transform your home, too. This homeowner started, or, started with the home that you see at the top here. They got a home design, and they actually implemented the improvements, and they really went above and beyond. This is trailblazing, and I hope that all neighborhoods and HOs think about how they can consider this type of growth in their neighborhoods. Got some more pictures of driveways here. Even a simple driveway replacement totally changes the street appeal of a home and our neighborhoods. Some folks took pictures of themselves with the pre-project photos, so I included one here, and it's a good reminder, reminder that we're making an impact on people's lives. Another picture here, you can see it's a night and day change. I mean, it looks way newer than it actually is. Cracked original driveways are pretty common with older homes, and I'm not surprised that it's a really popular project. This driveway right here was in really bad shape with the mud and the cracks, but this homeowner doesn't have to worry about it now, and they can park without getting the cars dirty. This garage door replacement was also incredible. Just one garage door replacement, this only costed about six thousand dollars, totally changed the facade of their home. We had a lot of window replacement projects from people replacing original windows. Energy-efficient double-pane windows was the most popular choice for windows, because we live in a very hot place, and you can see some of the slight improvements to the facade of the home here as well. But this improvement probably helped a lot of people feel more comfortable inside of their home this summer. There were probably hundreds of original windows that were replaced through this program, and I'm sure they're extremely grateful. Siding was a very popular project as well. With our climate, it should be no surprise that there are homes with worn or rotting siding throughout the city, and we saw a lot of people replace and paint some new siding. Here, you can see a picture, a before picture with rotting siding, and it looks pretty worn, it looks pretty rundown. And here's the after. It's night and day, and you can see it looks like there was no wear and tear at all. So, props to them. This homeowner, I talked to them personally, they had some leaks in the roof, and water was always leaking into their home, and siding, their siding was rotting and falling off of their house. And so, after using the program, their life was totally changed. No more leaky roof in a home that looks well taken care of. This homeowner replaced their front path to help with walking to their front door, so they don't have to trip on the, on the little stone parts at night, which is really great. This one was in Sugar Creek, it's absolutely amazing. They spent only about eleven thousand dollars to have their whole They spent only about $11,000 to have their whole home repainted in a modern colorway. I think painted brick can do a lot for a home when it's maintained and done well, and it gives it really premium look. Fences were another popular project, and can really help something look fresh and new, like when you first got your home. This homer replaced their white siding with blue siding, colored siding accents, or colored siding accents really, they really accent older homes really well, and they don't require a painting of the brick either. Here's another example. They painted the siding, painted the garage door, and added some great accessory lighting, great for safety at night. This trailblazing homeowner got a home design and implemented a lot of the landscaping and some of the siding painting as well. They added some greenish-gray siding and removed a metal gate that was blocking the entrance of their home, and it's totally night and day. We also had the Great Homes Design Program. We distributed over 75 home design vouchers this year, and we have a lot of home design vouchers remaining. And so I highly recommend getting one. You can get a home design for only about $25, and so if you go to this website or you Google Sugar Land Great Homes, you can go to the design program and get a home design today. And we plan to distribute the remainder of these home designs through year two of implementation. And so, okay, let's talk about some, before we talk about proposed changes, I wanted to go over some of the results from the survey we did. We put out, we put out a survey for people who completed the program, and so here's some quick answers here. So how did they find out about the program? They found out about it, a lot of them found out about it through word of mouth, city communications, and seeing it on the news. Pretty exciting stuff there. 100% of the people who answered the survey thought the eligibility requirements were easy, they understood it thorough. 95% of the respondents thought that the 10% and 25% reimbursement thresholds were reasonable and fair, so I think we hit the mark there. Most respondents strongly agreed the program staff were easily accessible for questions and help, which is awesome, great news for our customer service. Oh, this slide is awesome. 95% of respondents agreed that the program influenced their decision to do a home improvement project. That's something to be proud of. A lot of the respondents were able to finish their work in 90 days with no issue, over 90% here. And then this question is interesting. A lot of homeowners believe that their home, their neighborhood is aging, and I think helps to emphasize why reinvestment programs are so important to our community. 100% of respondents thought that the redevelopment and improvement of their home was important to them. And now for my favorite slide, and the last one before we go through the changes for year two. 100% of respondents agree or strongly agree that the redevelopment and improvement of the city is important to them, and I think this means we're heading on the right path. And so, okay, so for the proposed program changes, almost done here. In the new proposed policy, the median year built and median market value for the thresholds that decide the 10%, 10% versus 25% reimbursement incentives, that'll be the median kind of thresholds for those two values for any given year. So the way we wrote the policy in the first year, it was a set number, it was 370K, 1994 and older. In the new policy, it essentially says, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll pull the latest data and we'll pull the medians. You can see the medians here for year two implementations, that threshold would be built, if your home was built in 1993 or before, and it has a median, I should say, market value less than 395 right there, then you would be eligible for the 25%. So that would be a dynamic value over the years. We also broadened the eligible project types to include the replacement of gutters, front door replacement, and other projects related to the eligible project types. You know, we had a lot of siding projects where we awkwardly had to say no to people who wanted to add gutters, even though doing gutters with your siding is a really good idea, but it wasn't on the list, and so we kind of brought in the language there to give some leeway to people who wanted to do more than what was allowed on that list and where it made sense. The minimum total project cost for people in the 10% category of homes, that's that second half, that upper half of homes in Sugar Land, you'll need a $8,000 project minimum to apply for the program. This was added because there was about 20 projects where the city was only reimbursing $400, which was a little small, considering the amount of administrative work and compliance involved. Window replacement projects will only have 50% of the total project cost counted for the reimbursable amount. There were a lot of window project, replacement projects done, it was really popular, but we're hoping that this slight change helps to encourage some other project types that really impact the facade of the home. We added a requirement for fencing projects to be visible from the home street, and then we added an additional 2% reimbursement incentive if you apply for the program with a, with a design, exterior home design, and you include it in your application and show how you're gonna implement it. And so you get an additional 2% here. And that's helped, and that's to help kind of encourage people to use a home design with their, with their project. And you can get one now. We might be out of funding this year for the Great Homes Update Program, but anyone can go get a home design. The proposed program budget for year two implementation of the update program is $500,000 from the general fund. That would include 450K for reimbursement incentives and 50,000 for professional services related to the administrative and case management services of this program. There's a lot of compliance, site visits, and case management and customer service kind of things that you have to do with this program. I mean, we were managing a lot of capital projects at the same time, and so having that extra help is really helpful for year one. We'll continue to distribute the design vouchers, and the next step would be for city council to approve the updated program policy and program budget and reopen applications to the update program for year two. And that's it. I mean, I wanted to end with my favorite example of trailblazing that we saw here through Great Homes. This homeowner used their design to totally redo their home, and I think this is what it means to, or this is part of what it means to live a life better than you can imagine here in Sugar Land. So thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember's comments, thoughts? Stuart?
John, this is, this is just great, and the energy you all put into it is fabulous. Would you remind our residents where this money comes from?
Yes. This, these programs are funded through, through the general fund, right? We had a certain amount allotted last year through this program, thanks to some, thanks to the amount that we had available through, through sales tax and property tax to the general fund. And each of the home improvements that happen through this program really impact everybody. It's not just the individual homeowners. When your neighbor totally redoes their home and fixes that cracked driveway, for example, I mean, that, there's leaps and bounds for your street and impacting your whole community as well. And so, that's how we do that, so.
Anyone else? John, bring it back to us for approval.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This time, we're gonna move to item number seven, city council's city manager reports. Suzanne, let's start with you.
Thank you, sir. Last week or so, council member Ferguson, the mayor and I went to the Brookside-Bilnap HOA meeting, and we had a heck of a good time. We learned a lot about what's going on over there, and they sent us packing with some stuff to come back with, to do some work for them. So thank you, Bilnap-Brookside, for having us.
Carol?
I attended the Houston Association Realtors Elected Officials reception and a special Fort Bend County LITU meeting, and Ashad and I attended Tanchez's IT Solutions Business's 25th Anniversary Celebration. So congratulations to Tanzez and Chesley Chowdhury on their 25th anniversary of their business.
Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, the First Lady of District Three and I were on vacation last week, so we were unable to do any council duties.
I know you worked while you were over in Italy. Ashad?
Mayor, last night, I attended the LID 17 Special Meeting with Commissioner Myers and the entire LID Board, held at the University Branch Library. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to meet a young man called Ernav Chulaku with Troop 616, and he quizzed me on the Bill of Rights, and it was fun meeting with one of our young troops, boy scouts. And last week, Suzanne and I attended the groundbreaking in Telfair of another office condos, and they are already presold, 100% of all their new office condos. Just shows that we have so much growth in our city and in the best district there is, District Two.
No doubt. Jennifer?
I went on a ride along with Sugar Land PD on a fine Monday evening for about four hours, so that was fun and informative, and we did a tour of Texana, which is our mental health authority for Fort Bend County, and talked about processes.
William?
Well, Mayor, I did something I think was rather fitting, and I don't know how I got invited to it, but I got to tour an assisted living community and a memory care, they have memory care services there, and I felt right at home. It's a group called The Village. It's over off of 99 by River Park, and they are absolutely some of the sweetest people I've ever met, and they served me their little breakfast, and we had conversations about why they love Sugar Land so much. And if I may, with the, with the fire chief here, Chief, I don't know what you do to these people, but they talked about the fire department the entire time. And what was so cute is the little lady, she's like 71 years old, she looked at me, she goes, "They're just so fast." And I'm thinking, ma'am, I haven't experienced that, thankfully, but they love the fire department. So it was a good time, and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
I would remind everybody, this is the last week of the minor league baseball. We're gonna wrap it up Sunday afternoon. I think that game starts at 2:05. It's been great support from the community this year. We haven't necessarily played that well. I think we're in the basement, but it's been a, it's been a good time, and of course, the Houston Astros, which is the team that we feed, is in the running for the playoffs. So I think that's been a great investment for the city of Sugar Land. Encourage you to go out, support our space Cowboys. Mike, let's go to item number B, which is you.
Thanks, Mayor. I had the opportunity to go to Quantico Marine Base last week, and a lot of explosions going on there, a lot of machine gun fire, but then also, we had Assistant Chief James Davis that graduated from the National Academy, and that was really exciting. We also saw one of our former police officers that is in the FBI Academy, so feeding into that, but wanted to congratulate him, and I see Captain Laura in the audience. I know we're working on getting him in there next. I'll just say-
Pete, they're not ready for you, buddy. You'll tear that thing up.
You know, it, it was, it was humbling to watch what they went through. I think within the first week, there was a heart attack, there was completely separated Achilles tendons, number of ACLs. I mean, it was grueling what, what they went through, and then the hallmark of it is called the Yellow Brick Road, which is what the Marines go through, and you have to hit certain physical thresholds to be able to do it, and Chief Davis did that, and he got to do it. So we, we're all real proud of him.
Congratulations, James Davis. Before we go into close executive session, I'd like to recognize somebody, you know, over the last few years, actually since I've been mayor, we sometimes, when we come into doing boards and commissions appointments, we sometimes, we like to have it done by late September, early October. Sometimes we get that done around November and December. Well, I'd like to recognize Tia Moore, who had a significant effort this year. We're on track. We're going into executive session to talk about that. That's the first time, Tia, that I can remember that we've been on time, so stand and be recognized. T is our deputy, she doesn't stand very, very much. Go ahead and stand, our Deputy City Secretary. Go ahead and stand so everybody can see you. This time, we're gonna go into item number eight, close executive session. Close the executive session is authorized by 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with 55107 for public officers, and for the purpose of deliberations regarding appointments to and duties of the Building Standards Commission Independent Ethics Review Board, Planning and Zoning Commission Sugar Land 4B Corporation, and Zoning Board of Adjustment. This time, we're gonna go ahead and recess into the council dining room. Thank you all. Yeah. Yeah.